Protect them and keep them safe from harm. Bless this council, our city manager, as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people, and let all we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Thanks very much. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Will the clerk please read the resolution for the closed meeting?
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. Thanks for coming down. For the benefit of those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the first thing which we'll do is we're going to have one brief ceremonial matter. At the conclusion of that, we'll move to the regular agenda, well, the normal agenda, which is we have a number of public hearings, and we'll take them first, and then we'll move directly to the consent agenda, and then we move to the regular agenda. And we'll vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on our printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. But you have, in order to have your name called, you must have signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began, and seven or eight of you have elected to do that. The ceremonial matter involves Foster Care Month, and Steve, would you, Mr. Hawks, would you like to come up and see Jan with you, or bring in anybody that's bringing? I see we have some guests. We'd love to hear from them as well.
Good evening.
Hi, Steve. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. And Jan has the camera. Okay. And I'll read the proclamation, and we'd love to hear from you. It reads, "Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our communities and our Commonwealth; and whereas in the city of Norfolk there are 253 children, and youth in foster care being provided with a safe, secure, and stable home, along with the compassion and nurture of a foster family; and whereas all young people in foster care need a meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives; and whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families, who often, who open their homes and hearts and support children whose families are in a crisis, play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood; and whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a greater need for more foster families; and whereas we are thankful for the numerous individuals and organizations for their valuable contribution to increasing public awareness of the needs of children in and leaving foster care, as well as the enduring steadfast devotion of foster parents and those working in the public foster care system. Now therefore, I palfray Mayor of the City of Norfolk to hereby proclaim May 2014 as Foster Care Month in the city of Norfolk, and encourage all citizens to get involved through foster care, volunteering or mentoring to change the life of a child, and also urge citizens to recognize the commitment of our foster families as they lend their strength to our most vulnerable children in their efforts to help these young people realize their full potential. Given under my hand this 13th day of May 214, and Steve, let me give this to you, 2014, Rob. Thank you very much for bringing this important issue to our attention one more time, okay? We'd love to hear from you, okay?
You may still be mayor.
Mayor Frame, members of council, I do have several members of our staff that work in the various aspects of foster care with us this evening. We have Gary Cofield, our program manager, Dina Powell Brickhouse, our supervisor, and also Sheila Cross and Chetara Johnson are with us this evening. We do appreciate so much that you take the time out of your busy agenda to pass a resolution and to recognize issues such as foster care. In the resolution, you heard the wording, there are 253 children that are in the foster care system here in Norfolk.
Yeah.
That's very disruptive to their lives. For whatever reason, they are not living in their biological home, and we have care for them. We need quality foster homes that will help provide stability for the children, hopefully help get them back to their biological family, but as mentioned, sometimes to become the adoptive permanent homes. So, our commercial is, and this is for the camera, hopefully it will get it, please become a foster parent. We need quality foster homes, and thank you so much for the time and recognition.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. It's an important matter. Thank you all for coming down. Okay, that concludes the ceremonial matters, and then we'll move directly to the public hearings, please. Public hearing number one.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day on the application of the city of Norfolk for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of the western side of Atlantic Street south of Waterside Drive, and the planning commission recommends approval by 7-0 vote.
Okay, there are no, there are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter. If there are no questions, you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of the western side of Atlantic Street south of Waterside Drive, and authorizing the conveyance to the abutting property owner, Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Atlantic Street, dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. Public hearing two.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day under state law on the application of the city planning commission to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, Section 11-2 Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District, and Chapter 26 Site Plan Review to comply with state stormwater management regulations. Planning commission recommends approval by 6-0 vote.
Um, okay, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend.
Wait a minute, oh, Ellis, I'm sorry, public hearing. There you are, Ellis, PH2.
I would have known he was going to comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Members of the council, Mr. Jones?
I'm Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the great city of Norfolk. I wanted to rise in support of this. As you may recall, Mr. Mayor, some years ago, I did drive all the way to Fredericksburg to express concern about the IDA, and found, to my surprise and pleasant surprise, I found that several of the commissioners of the hearing at that time agreed with my concerns about so much of Norfolk becoming declared IDA. It strikes me that this is now going to move in the right direction, and I had checked just previously, early this evening, to double-check and make sure that there was no implication or problem that would arise from the overlay, and I'm satisfied after listening to Mr. Homewood and Lenny and so on, that we're in good shape, and I very much want to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellis. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain certain portions of Section 11-2 and Chapter 26 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, so as to accommodate changes to the city's stormwater management regulations as required by state law, dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Public hearing four.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day under state law to hear comments approving a lease agreement with Soraya LLC doing business as Oceanview Water Slide for a portion of community beach or property in the city of Norfolk.
Okay, we have four speakers here to really answer questions, if any of us have any. That would be the distinguished attorney Bobby Howlett is here, Jeff Howlett, Richard Katz, and they brought Christopher Hagan with them as well. So...
Who knew?
Any questions for any of this crew here? So, no.
I know, that really is...
We would...
It is a crew, though.
Yeah, we don't, I think, prepared to vote unless you really have something. Okay. Or you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Soraya LLC doing business as Oceanview Water Slide for a portion of community beach or property in the city of Norfolk, dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just want to say I'm excited about the new entertainment and opportunities this may bring to that section, and I hope it's very successful. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
I have to say it's the first time in my career that my son has cared what my vote was. I thought something was up. Now I see totally what was up. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, guys. Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day under state law to hear comments on the non-proprietary portions of the proposals submitted in response to the city of Norfolk's and Norfolk Public Schools' request for proposals pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 to provide design permitting development and construction services in connection with the construction of five schools.
There are, I think, five or six folks who have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, if you come to the podium, please identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name, present home address, and then limit your remarks, please, to three minutes. Mark Perot.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Mark Perot. I live at 950 Hanover Avenue in Norfolk. I've spoken before, council, recently regarding historic Larchmont and Oceanview Elementarys. I think of the schools that are being addressed by the PPA, these are clearly the two that have the most significant historic character, and I think we all in Norfolk do best when we manage to preserve our historic character when we rebuild something. I think we all understand how well the Slover Library has done in that, the Magnet School on Granby Street, and we see the success of downtown and many of our historic neighborhoods because of the historic character that has been retained while moving into the 21st century. I understand from attending the informal session that the first step, if this ordinance is approved, is there'll be some public workshops on Larchmont and Oceanview and other schools at which conceptual site plans and floor plans will be presented, and I have to assume from what I heard that these conceptual site plans and floor plans will only be for a new, entirely new construction, and will not show the option, maybe I'd love to be corrected on this, but that there will not be a conceptual site plan or floor plan for a renovated Larchmont or Oceanview presented at these workshops, and that being the case, I do not see how we can possibly expect any kind of fair, fair hearing for the renovation option. In particularly, I hope that this still can be done, because I would point out particularly with Larchmont, if we renovate the most historic part of it, we're only renovating about 30% or so of the existing school. Most of the school, majority of the school, was built in the 50s and 70s, has no particular historic character, and should be replaced in any event. I think we ought to, you know, we apply ourselves and try to figure out a way, the mayor referred this morning to saving the bell at the Oceanview Elementary School. I think that sentiment is well taken, and I think we ought to build on that and try to come up with plans that take the best of the old schools, retain it in a new rebuilt school, and achieve a win-win, which is what we, when we apply ourselves in Norfolk, it's when we have our greatest success and bring the community together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Schrader?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I am Susan Schrader, and I live at 1766 Farragut Avenue. Our city and our schoolchildren deserve a quality school building with character that inspires learning. Modernization and expansion of historic Larchmont and Oceanview Elementary schools will give the students and citizens what they need and deserve. Regardless of the private-public partner you choose, you must insist, if they don't already have on their teams anyone with expertise in renovation of historic buildings, that they acquire the services of someone with that expertise. I recently returned from my 50th high school reunion in Atlanta, and our school is still there. It was built in 1920, and it has been renovated, enlarged, and modernized, and it is a source of pride for all who have attended and are attending it. It now has a new name, but it's still, it's still there, and it's even better. And it's also an asset to Atlanta. It was in two modern-day films. It was in Parental Guidance with Billy Crystal and Bette Midler, and it was in The Blind Side with Sandra Bullock. The renovation of historic Larchmont and Oceanview will be a source of pride for all who attend it and a source of pride for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Allen Grimes?
My name is Alice Allen Grimes, and I live at 1322 Mallory Court. I am here on behalf of the Norfolk Preservation Alliance. As you know, in 2008, the city's consultants recommended renovation and expansion of Larchmont and Oceanview Elementary schools after considering costs and the structural condition of the buildings. The experts did not recommend demolition and replacement of these two schools, and their recommendations were later confirmed by a citizen task force. You are now undertaking an effort to upgrade these two schools, along with three others. You should follow the recommendations of the experts hired to assess our school buildings and the citizen task force who evaluated their work. Larchmont School is a striking collegiate design building that lends an impressive character to Hampson Boulevard and serves as a gateway to ODU surrounding neighborhoods and the naval base. The historic front portion of the school could be readily renovated with a new addition to the rear, and the impressive trees in front of the school could be retained. Oceanview Elementary is the largest and best example of art deco architecture in the city of Norfolk. The enormous tile mural on the front of the school is irreplaceable. The auditoriums of both schools could be retained and renovated for future generations rather than delegating school programs to a cafeteria with a low fold-out stage. Both of these buildings are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Regardless of the private-public team you select, you must require them from the get-go to renovate these impressive buildings. They can be fully equipped and modernized, and you will fulfill your objective of providing new schools. If there are any parents or others who have any doubts that a renovated historic school is a new school, just take them on a tour of Bayview Elementary, Blair Middle, or Granby High School. These well-renovated historic schools offer the same technology, bathrooms, cafeterias, and classrooms of any other new school, but in a much more solid structure. You can take any naysayers to some of our newer schools and show them the leaks and the cracks in the foundation that in some cases appeared less than a year after construction. The use of historic tax credits can substantially reduce the cost of a project, and the city has used tax credits on other projects and knows how to do it. To a large extent, life in our neighborhoods is centered around our public schools. Removing important school buildings that are so deeply woven into the fabric of our communities can only hurt the surrounding neighborhoods. Modernizing and expanding these wonderful historic schools can be a real gift to the neighborhoods and to the city as a whole. When you conduct your community meetings, you must present generalized site plans only that allow for changes based on public input. It is not an open public process if you present a preordained footprint. If you are going to say you're conducting a public input process, then you should actually do so. Thank you.
Joe Austin?
Downstairs, there's the DMV. There's a DMV all crossed. First of all, by the way, big ups, Mr. Jones, I'm getting a kid pronouncing, congratulations, you deserve every inch of it. There's a DMV downstairs, DMV across town, it stands for Department of Motor Vehicles, but this is the DMV, the donor's money vote. This developer gave Mr. Frame $5,000 over the past two years. Mr. Frame gives Mr. Riddick $3,000. Mr. Winn gave Mr. Riddick $200. Mr. Protogil gave, or Sorty gave $250. It's all connected. It's all connected. And I'm against it because the way it was done. Now, you've got a school that's been sitting there for a whole year, and now, Dr. Whibley, tell me if I'm wrong, was Taylor treated like this? No. Mr. Frame, was Blair treated like this for the school, closed for a year? No. Was Crossroads treated like this? No. But, and it still is. You've got a councilperson who hits for the homeboys and catches for the other team, and when you play baseball, when you catch the ball, you always throw it around and get it back to the pitcher. You know what the pitcher is? Mayor Frame. Calls balls and strikes. Some of y'all play right along with it. Now, I'm not against somebody building a school, it should have been done, but the disrespect for the South Side, some of the poorest people in this city, again, and it wouldn't have happened if Taylor, Blair, or Crossroads. Never would have happened. So why are you relishing your victories and all that kind of stuff? Relishing right and wrong. But you can go swimming on the South Side with that big mini-black statues in front of it. That's a wonderful thing, but the kids deserve the same thing Taylor got, and they're not. And it's a disgrace that it's happened. So with all the scaredy cat preachers in Norfolk, yes, I said it, and I'm going to say it again, all the scaredy cat preachers that was down here with the tax assessments and all that stuff, what do you have tonight? What are you? So, I know I might get some flack on that, but so what? My father, Columbus Joe Austin Jr., always told me, when I had this little rant like I'm having now, and I finished talking, he said, "You done?" And I said, "I'm done." He said, "You're not responsible for what they do. You're responsible for what you do." And my little three minutes I got up here, not 34 years like you have, and 22 years like you have, I got three minutes to let you know how disgusted I am, how these people treat it, and it ain't right. So yes, he's going to get the bid. You already decided. R13 says it's going to go to the gentleman's name, who Mr. Dorsey's going to name, so as you call your roll call out, you all going to say aye. I'm calling my roll call out now. I'm going to revise and stay my remarks. I'm going to read the ordinance and adopt. Joe Austin, because of what has happened, votes no.
Dan Montague?
Dan Montague, 4605 Creek Street here in the city of Norfolk. Good evening, everyone. This right here, like my mother taught me when I was a little boy, when it sounds too good to be true, it is. This, in my estimation, and I'll be 75 in November, is the first stage of the public schools going private. Back in the Bush administration, they all got educated real good, and when they became governors of these different states, they started selling all the public stuff that they could sell. If we entered into this agreement, you can kiss the public schools of Norfolk goodbye. I probably won't see it, but I guarantee you, you will. And you will. And the thing about it is, you know, Ballard has got to make money. The city doesn't. All they got to do is just pay their bills, but Ballard has got to make money, and if they don't make money, then they're out of business. And so therefore, I am totally against this, and I want to see it go down like a hot air balloon on a bad day. Thank you.
Richard Levin? Is Richard here? Okay, that's all the slips I have of someone, of anyone who signed up to speak on this, so unless there are any comments, you can call the roll. The motion on this, Mr. President, is to close the public hearing. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. R1.
R1 is an ordinance to amend and reordain the Norfolk City Code by adding one new chapter 41.2 entitled Virginia Stormwater Management Program so as to adopt the Stormwater Design and Construction Manual, dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Evan Eva's LLC authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Eva's on property located at 4314 Colley Avenue. Planning commission recommends approval by 5-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
This is the first of a couple of ordinances we have, and Highland Park has come to me talking about how many special exceptions are coming to them. This is very exciting. This is called NOCO, North Colley. Now, that's the name of this area, and it's really exciting to see it respond to our Upper Hampton Boulevard corridor study, and so I'm excited that these groups are coming in. Thank you. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Tiffany Kidwell Gaylord and David Pletic authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Saint Germain on property located at 913 West 21st Street, by 5-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance, and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R4 and 4A, can you do that?
Yes, sir. R4 is an ordinance granting a special exception to Cogan's Pizza LLC authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as Cogan's Pizza on property located at 4311 Colley Avenue, Suite B. For both items, planning commission recommends approval by 5-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement, read the ordinance...
Mr. Katz is here to answer any questions, Richard is, if anybody...
...for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Katz is here to answer any questions. Richard is, if anybody. Okay.
For reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R five.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Tidewater Seafood LLC authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-perimises consumption at an establishment known as Tidewater Seafood on property located at seventy-four eighty-three Tidewater Drive. By five-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Just a second. Rick Hen? Is Rick here? Rick is here to answer any questions, if anybody has any. And then Alton Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, Council. My name is Alton Robinson. My address is seven thirty-five West Thirty-Fifth Street. Actually, I intended to sign up for PH five, but I made an error, and I say a R five, so it's not her fault, it's my fault. So I take that blame. But being that it is an agenda item I signed up for, and I have three minutes, I figure I utilize them.
No, this has to be on the, this should be on the topic.
I'm going to speak on the topic.
Okay, good.
And the topic is Tidewater Seafood.
Good.
And being as mentioned in seafood, I'm going to talk about seafood and alcohol, because alcohol makes you drunk. And when one is drunk, their decision is persuaded by the alcohol. And oftentimes, money works like alcohol. Money persuade people's decision. And when money persuade people decisions, it opens up an avenue where someone could possibly view corruption. And corruption, like old seafood, stinks. If you leave seafood in a garbage can, it begins to stink. So, that's when you have corruption. Corruption is like seafood, and seafood stinks. Alcohol persuades people decisions, just like money. And we all know the story. We've been listening to it, and we've been hearing it. We've been hearing about people that's been making campaign donations to people who've been winning campaigns, and then weeks later, they on their agenda to do certain things in our city. We have a wealthy city. And the decision to distribute the wealth of our city should not be made by alcohol. Oh, I mean, money. Either way, it persuades decisions. When you drunk, you make wrong decisions. When people give you a lot of money, sometimes, often, you make wrong decisions based on the amount of money that they give you. And that is corruption. So, that's all I have to say on this agenda item. And for the seafood place, oh, I'm for it. Thank you.
Right, you can call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Pardon me. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R six.
An ordinance to repeal four subsections of Section twenty-five dash six fifty-three and one subsection of Section twenty-five dash six fifty-four, and to amend and reordain Sections twenty-five dash six fifty-two, six fifty-three, six fifty-four, six fifty-six, and six sixty of the Norfolk City Code nineteen seventy-nine, so as to add one new one-way street, one new yield intersection, ten new stop intersections, two new vehicles over five tons prohibitions, and three new automated traffic signals. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
You know, I was looking at this over the weekend, and I was trying to figure out why it's necessary to put so many stop signs in some neighborhoods. I was particularly interested in Grove Avenue area. It's a neighborhood road. I don't, I don't see that much traffic going there, but I think we're adding six stop signs along that route. But a couple of weeks ago, I asked for the intersection of Portal and Broadfield to be addressed with speeding, and I don't see that on here, but that, that road seems to get more speeders. In fact, there's a group of neighbors that have gotten together and have been asking the city to do something about that area. But I'm, I'm just wondering if sometimes, when these come up, maybe we need an explanation. Is this because there's one citizen that complains about speeding on the road, and then all of a sudden, we go out there and we say, "Oh, we're going to put stop signs up to fix this," but then we end up having to repeal them later, because then everybody else in the neighborhood comes out and complains about all the new stop signs that have appeared. I understand there's certain places for it, like, you know, we talked about Pythian and Old Ocean View, where you have people who will divert off of Chesapeake Boulevard and speed down those roads. But some of these, there's these small neighborhoods. I just, I don't see why we're doing this. Maybe that's why Andy voted no. I don't-
It's exactly the reason that you've said. I just, unless-
Yeah, anyway.
Invariably, these are requested by the community when we put stop signs in neighborhoods.
We always hear that.
And it, and it is checked with the community and with the civic league. It's not something that-
It's not the-
-we thought up.
Yes, sir, it is. Exactly what Tommy said. I mean, unless you get it from the civic league, then I agree. And the civic league comes, and they make the request. But what happens is, and it happened in my neighborhood, and it's exactly what Tommy says, one person makes a complaint, we run out there with a stop sign, and the next thing you know, there's stop signs. This is an old city. These streets have been there for a long time. And we're saying, all of a sudden, we need to put stop signs everywhere. And it comes out of nowhere. And I tend to agree with Tommy on this, and that's why every time these come up, because I have lived it, it's a no. So, unless we can come up with a better way of telling us that you have a letter from the civic league, or they're making complaints, and it's not just some individual, you will always have a no vote from me.
Yes, sir. We'll provide information on the ground for these.
Tommy, did you vote?
Yeah, I, I'm troubled by this Grove Avenue. I just walked over there. I was knocking doors. I maybe saw five cars go down that road the time I was there. I just don't see the need for all those stop signs. But like I said, on Portal, there is a need, because there are speed, or the way the road curves, I'm just, maybe it's being addressed, I don't know. But I can't support this, no.
Okay. Dr. Whibley?
Well, if there's confusion on council, which there appears to be, it seems to me we ought to be able to have a resolution on that. I mean, in the past, it's been that there've been civic leagues that ask for stop signs, and then that's brought up. So, I think instead of just having a no or a yes vote, we ought to just have it presented to us. I mean, do you want to delay this, or vote, or?
You know, we typically-
Or do you want to just go ahead with this vote, and then go forward with a different way to present this to council? I mean, because typically, this is not presented to us the week before, like we do with other votes. So, council members don't know what kind of citizen input has happened. Am I correct? Am I correct? So, what, that seems like a pretty simple fix.
I was told, I'm sorry, Paul, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
But I guess, instead of let's just, instead of just voting no on principle, which I get, let's fix it. And not just, yeah, let's, you know, let's change the process if people are unhappy with-
The last time this came up, I voted no also, and Barkley said, "What are you doing voting no on a stop sign?"
Right, but now you've clarified why you vote no. So, let's change the process, so you can be informed, and your vote isn't just on principle, it's on data.
Actually, I mean, the last one, because Ellis-
Well, I mean, I'm glad to delay this for a week, so you can get the information, and maybe we'll break it into-
It just makes sense to me that we don't-
Something that you can't-
Don't do votes on principle, we do votes on data. And if the data demonstrates that two people want the stupid stop sign in their four cars, fine, we know about it. But if it shows us something else, then we can make the vote based on data.
There's explanation under each one, and you can even see, it's the Grove area, it says, "Were initiated by Bayview area residents."
Right, but now what we need-
And then the X-line says, "The Northview Boulevard at Seafar intersection was requested by Harborwalk area residents." And then the next one says, "The East Beach Civic League," but there is no East Beach Civic League, but, I mean, that's-
That's what I'm saying. So, let's clarify the explanation, so you feel comfortable.
This stuff comes out on Fridays, right?
Yeah.
There ought to be a way by this time, before we get to vote, that you bring it to somebody's attention, before we get up here. But let's, why don't we continue this for a week, and then we'll, we'll try to sort it out between now and next week.
And it'll be, it's a simple change, for the clarification in either written form or the meeting before, don't you think?
It's easy. I mean, it's, it's-
It should be easy.
Then you're going to start picking.
I think there should be a process, though. I mean, I agree with-
That's what I'm saying, that's the change.
I mean, but that's still not going to, I think, I don't know if that's going to resolve these particular requests, because I know in some of the neighborhoods that, you know, that I have, we've asked for stop signs or yield signs in Barrow Park, and some in, I think in Huntersville, and we've heard, you know, traffic doesn't warrant it, this and that. I mean, it, it just, so how do we get, how does some neighborhoods get a stop sign, and some neighborhoods, traffic doesn't, I don't understand, so.
Well, I mean, we have professionals that go out and evaluate these intersections. I don't think every time somebody called and asked for a stop sign, they run out and put a stop sign. They study.
They do in Lock Haven.
I don't know.
Oh, yes, they do.
Well, they don't in Barrow Park.
Okay. Well, what we're going to do is, we'll have it on the agenda next week.
It's not like anybody stops at them, anyway. Go put them up.
At least they slow down.
Wait a minute, whoa, whoa, wait a second. Wait a minute, hold on, whoa, okay. I will, the motion is to continue for one week, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R seven.
An ordinance approving one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services for the For For Life program, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars for the program to be used for medical training purposes and to purchase emergency medical equipment. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R nine.
An ordinance closing certain city-owned docks to public use during the Norfolk Harborfest twenty-fourteen celebration. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R ten.
An ordinance establishing certain public areas and streets of the city of Norfolk as the festival area, and setting forth the regulations applicable to such festival area for the Norfolk Harborfest twenty-fourteen celebration.
Alton Robinson. This is turning into a circus.
Good evening, Mayor Frame. My address is seven thirty-five West Thirty-Fifth Street, and I am in support of this agenda item. I believe, like is written, all regulations are written for the purpose of public safety and/or protection of the park. And all regulations should be enforced to protect the public from officers who do not respect the law. I was here a few Tuesdays ago, when a gentleman came here and spoke on a particular issue, and I know it's ongoing and under investigation, and no one can get into details. But from my understanding, the officer charged the gentleman with assault on a law officer, obstruction of justice, and resisting arrest. And according to the testimony of the son at the last meeting, they were all false charges. And if or since they were false charges, that would mean that the officers has committed a crime. And just like citizens in our city who commit crimes, they either go to jail. And oftentimes, officers, when they do something to break the law, it is if nothing happens to them. Well, in this incident, I hope that something does happen, so that it could begin to send a message to all the other officers who are on our wonderful police force, that may want to believe that they can break the law and get away with it. I would have a question that I would ask would be, come or will the officers be charged with State Code eighteen point two dash four three four, which is perjury, if needs be? And also, would the officers be charged with State Code eighteen point two dash four three five, giving conflicting testimony? And also, that just like every citizen that commits a crime, that has to go through the judicial process, that they be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, just like every other citizen in this city? So that we have an opportunity to weed out those officers who believe that they can come in communities and violate people's civil rights and break the law? So then, the officers, which I know that there's a vast majority of officers who do not do that. Norfolk has some wonderful officers. I know plenty of them. Excuse me?
R ten. This is about the Harborfest celebration.
Yeah, I did mention, it says, "All regulations are written for the purpose of public safety and protection of the park." That was in the agenda item. Do you remember I said that in the beginning?
Thank you. R, okay.
You cut across me, it took my little few seconds.
Sure did. Go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R eleven.
An ordinance approving a right-of-entry agreement with S.B. Ballard Construction Company. That mean that you're going to approve them doing business for the city? If that's the case, then anybody that took one penny of them for campaign contributions, no matter who you are, should excuse yourself from the vote on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, can I call the roll?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
I just wanted to say thank you to Breck and the staff for clearing up the agenda items on the website. All of the documents that council receives is available now on the website, so you can actually read through beyond this little description and get all the same details that we get. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
R thirteen.
Twelve, Mr. President.
Twelve?
Yes, sir. R twelve is an ordinance approving a right-of-entry agreement with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
All right, R thirteen.
An ordinance authorizing and approving an interim agreement between the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and S.B. Ballard Construction Company under the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act.
Alton Robinson.
Hey, Mayor Frame, my name is Alton Robinson. My address is 735 West 35th. I'm here to speak on this agenda item, and I'm talking real fast, so you won't take any of my time. No, that was a joke. S.B. Ballard on the agenda item several times today. S.B. Ballard, high campaign contributor. And I'm speaking on this because I wanted to be in public record, because I don't think it's right that they would have a pre-agreement. And I'm not no attorney, but I normally just make an agreement. I don't make an agreement to make an agreement. So that makes you really not understand. And also, like Tommy just spoke on, I do wanna thank whoever is responsible for putting all this information on the internet, and a lot of them are like eight and a half pages long. It's a lot to read. But I did not read all of this. I just read S.B. Ballard, and then I began to check VPAP. And when I checked VPAP, I saw that S.B. Ballard was a contributor to many of our council members' campaign. And I think that, like Mr. Montague said, that no one on council who received donations from this company should be voting on anything to give this company anything, because it appears to be corrupt. Whether it's corrupt or not, those and God know. But it's a conspiracy theory floating around in the city concerning this matter, and I think it should not be. I think that you should not vote if S.B. Ballard has given you any money from 2014 election, all the way back to 2012, all the way back to when you first began to sit on council, whoever you may be. And you all know who you are. It's out there in the internet, it's public information, and it is not right. I believe it's not right, and I know that you all know it's not right. It's not right to the public, it's not right to the taxpayers. When people give you money, they should not reap a benefit, because if that's so, I've given this city money, and I would like to reap a large benefit, too. Thank you.
Dan Montague.
Dan Montague, 4605 Creek Street here in the city. This, ladies and gentlemen, is what I used to do for a living. I used to overhaul oil refineries as part of my trade. This city is determined to build some schools, okay? And the last two out of the three, I hadn't been to the third one yet, but the last two have been pieces of junk. You can go in Norview High School and look to the left in the auditorium, crack floor to ceiling. Nothing lines up. Nothing is plumbing that building. And therefore, that building will not last as long as its previous, well, its predecessor. And the thing about it is, we are buying junk in this city. I don't care whether it's roads, curbs, sidewalks, whatever, we buy junk, because nobody inspects it or knows how to inspect it. Over at the fitness center, they had that much concrete in a six-inch pipe. They had over half of the pipe loaded with concrete, because the inspector didn't do his job. Now, we gonna build all these schools, and like I say, you gonna see them fall down. Not me, but you will. And the thing about it is, we have got to start tightening up when we start doing business with these contractors, for the simple reason is, they're getting away with too much. I guarantee you, I can take any one of you into Norview High School, or Coleman Place Elementary School, and point out flaw after flaw after flaw. I mean, it is so simple, and I, as you see, I wear bifocals. And it is so simple to find it. And if I can find it, how come the inspectors in the city can't find it? But yet, you do anything in your neighborhood, they'll come over, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know? But yet, we let the contractors that do business with the city get away with absolute murder. And the thing is, we have got to tighten them up. And I don't care who builds, I don't like S.B. Ballard building the schools, but, you know, 'cause like I say, this is leading down the road or privatizing the schools. But the thing about it is, you guys are determined to do it, and if you gonna build them, then build them right. Thank you.
Bruce Williams.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel, Mr. Manager. Last year, Hampton Roads Committee, uh, excuse me, Bruce Williams, Hampton Roads Committee of 200-plus men, economic justice chair, 1068 Meadow Grove Trail, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Last year, the Hampton Roads Committee of 200-plus men urged this body to enact legislation to authorize a disparity study of the city's procurement process. Studies have been conducted by the City of Hampton and the City of Portsmouth, providing an opportunity for cost-saving in terms of key activities associated with such a study. Since that time, the Minority Business Council of Virginia Beach has requested that city council also conduct the disparity study. Research of the construction expenditures for the Norfolk Court Complex indicates that 4% of the $122 million that was spent was spent with women business enterprises. And of that, four of those enterprises were in Hampton Roads, the other two were out of state. 7% was spent with one minority business enterprise who resides in Richmond. You are now committed to a similar amount of five dollars for five schools in the City of Norfolk. With all the current disparity study conducted in the city, the council needs to be very careful, accepting any proposal that lacks specified goals for women-owned and minority-owned business enterprises. A blanket SWAM goal, as indicated on page 30, item T, in the proposed ordinance that you will soon act, is insufficient for any project of this magnitude in this city. Since 98% of the businesses in Virginia are small, not applying MWBE goals to this project would be a gross injustice to a large number of this city's taxpayers. The S.B. Ballard proposal indicates a 50% SWAM participation. We strongly urge that you amend the language of this ordinance to state that at least 20%